Okay, thank you. I am, I've got one item that Ken's gonna ask to add.
Ready?
About Res 6.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the first Board of Commissioners meeting for 2020. It is 5:04 as I'm calling us to order for our meetings and public hearings. And the date for the record is January the 9th of 2020. Tonight, we have with us a special guest to help us with the invocation. From Pinecrest, we have Father Daniel Brandenburg. If you can please come forward and lead us in the invocation and the pledge. And if you will, please stand as you are able. Thank you.
Let us bow our heads and pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Gifts that we receive as citizens of this beautiful country, but also out of your goodness. We pray that our conduct, our discussion, our thoughts, and our interactions with each other this evening be guided by your truth. Your truth which becomes real in your Son who called himself the way, the truth, and the life. Heavenly Father, guide our thoughts and actions this evening as we conduct this business in a way that it's for the good of the entire county of Forsyth County, Georgia, and for the good of each one of the constituents present here this evening and those who will be affected by the decisions taken this evening. We ask your blessing upon this convocation and guide our steps this evening. We turn our attention to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which extends, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm gonna start with Commissioner Levent. Do you have any changes to the agenda this evening?
I do not have any, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper, do you have any changes to the agenda this evening?
Madam Chair, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mills?
I do not, other than what Ken's bringing forward.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Brown?
Madam Chair, I have none.
Wow. Okay, well then, moving right along. Eric Johnson, County Manager, do you have any changes to the agenda this evening?
I do not.
Okay. Mr. Merritt?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, I do not.
Okay, and Counselor?
Madam Chair, thank you. Board members, a few comments. First of all, I believe there might be an interest with respect to a new business item. This would be new business four on the published agenda to talk about the Res 6 zoning category. And so that would require a motion and second and at least a four-fifth to talk about the Res 6 zoning district.
So that would be in addition, it would be added as number four?
Yes, ma'am.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that motion does carry unanimously as item number, new business number four, for a discussion of Res 6 zoning categories. Anything else, Counselor?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Levent, just to confirm that with respect to anything involving Board of Commissioners compensation or remuneration, that's gonna be the work session?
I believe that Mr. Brown is gonna be a first and I believe Commissioner Cooper is a second for the next work session.
Thank you. I just, that's on my little list of things to go over. Thank you, I understand.
All right.
Madam Chair, one more item for me, and that is going to Commissioner Levent as well. Do you want the Board to discuss a potential letter to our federal and state delegation with respect to the water wars this evening?
Yes, please.
So that would need to go, Madam Chair, as new business item number five, and that would be a correspondence to the federal and state delegation regarding the water wars.
Thank you, so noted. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. That item has been added as new business number five. Anything further?
Madam Chair, that's all for me, thank you.
Thank you. I do have one item of my own, and that is for our public hearing, number three, is going to be postponed at the applicant's request until our first public hearing of February, which would be February the 6th. That's my motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, please vote. And that motion carries unanimously, so that item will be postponed.
Which one?
I have nothing further. Is there anything from staff that we've missed?
Wait, Commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Were you gonna act on public hearing number five? That's the asphalt plant one?
Madam Chair, I think the County Manager is spot on correct. We may want to withdraw that.
Do that now and dispense with it. Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and the action being taken is to withdraw that from the agenda. Please vote. And with a unanimous vote, that is withdrawn from the agenda. The business itself, the application was withdrawn at a previous meeting, and that was simply a formality to remove it from the agenda. Are there any other items to be changed from staff? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that motion carries unanimously. Okay, our next item of business is to adopt the rules and procedures for 2020. And there has been some discussion. We typically adopt our rules the first meeting of the year every year, and we've tended to kind of keep the same set of rules that we govern ourselves by. But we've had some discussion amongst various Commissioners that we would change the board election dates, which this evening we will be electing our, or appointing our board leadership for the year. We've had some discussion that we may want to move to more of a model where we have kind of a earlier, in the October, November, and the fall timeframe to have those elections earlier, so that we have some time to have a chairman-elect and to kind of bring people online a little bit quicker when they're ready to start on January 1st. I know initially it was proposed to me as an October timeframe, but in, as a product of some discussion, it kind of came to life that there, we may want to make it at least in election years to be the first Thursday meeting after the first Tuesday in November, due to the fact that we may appoint somebody who may be running for reelection that fails to be reelected. So is there any discussion amongst the board on that item?
I personally, I'm not sure. I understand that your concept, Madam Chair, would be that it would give the opportunity to a new chair to walk in the steps of the present chair so they would get acclimated better by the time they step into the full role. Not a bad idea. I know sometimes if you're not a Commissioner long enough, it can be even more to step into. However, we're in an election year, and I don't know that it's fair to elect a chairperson before the full boards in play and that they should be able to, whoever's elected as Commissioner next year, should have the opportunity to elect their own chair to represent them. And I don't know that that should be our place to do it.
So you're opposed to having an election prior to the end of the year?
As of right now, but if we want to bring this back up and rediscuss this just after the runoffs in July, I might be more apt at that moment because we may be a lot of the same people, although except for now Mr. Brown has announced he's not running again. And if that's the case, then that's a moot point. But I would like to see how that all lays out.
Right. I mean, I think, I understand your point. I think my kind of counter to that was that I feel like there's two things, and I'm gonna try to pretend I'm Ken here for a second. And that is, the one point is that we can't bind a future board to that decision.
That's correct.
Certainly, if there was, it absolutely could be changed. But the other issue, I think, is that the expectation that a new Commissioner would come on board and would feel that they were going to be either the chair or vice chair at that point probably is pretty, a pretty minute possibility.
But they may want to pick who represents them. They may want to have a vote and say who that is.
They may. And if they disagree with the previous board, they can certainly challenge that.
Yeah, because my point on it, the way I feel about that is, yes, I can understand and respect what you're saying, Commissioner Levent, completely. However, whenever you come on new, you have not had the experience of working with the folks on the board. So coming in and voting on a chair, I think it is certainly worth the discussion for us to look at, doing an early vote of getting, having the transition period from the new chair to, with the older chair, or with the previous chair, or standing chair.
So when will you actually vote on this person who'll be the chair next year? In October?
My proposal would be the first Thursday of November, as long as it follows Election Day.
I'm probably okay with that, and here's why. If whoever's elected in is gonna be here next year, I would suggest at the bare minimum, we get their input. Because otherwise, you're gonna have a little, you know, start of the new Commissioner, have a little animosity with you without giving them respect to allow them to vote for their chair.
Well, I mean, as you know, when we're all coming on, and we've, depending on whether we had runoffs, most of us had a pretty long runway coming on board as a new Commissioner. You know, I had a runoff, so after July, basically, I had the opportunity to kind of, to come to meetings and start walking in the halls and getting my books and getting my training wheels on. And so I think that certainly the individuals that find themselves in that position, whether they're elected in November or whether they're elected through a primary process, they should have that, they'll have that time to have that input.
I just ask that we give them respect to have an opinion, although they won't have a vote.
Well, you're on a board that gives respect.
I'm sorry?
I mean, you don't have to tell us, we know how to give respect. But Ken, can we, can we make this rule be where it's worded one way for election year and not for another?
Commissioner, yeah, I'm drafting some language right now, based upon what we put together.
Thank you, that's exactly right, Commissioner Mills. That's kind of my point. Thank you.
Commissioner Brown, you have any thoughts on this subject?
The only concern I have is we want to make sure that the board is set before we do it. I think a reasonable amount of time would be after the general election. That way, it's a date certain that the board is firm. That would give at least one meeting to do that. So I think, I think after the general election, probably. But I'm definitely, for the intent, I really like, because I think that's a good, a good plan.
Okay. Ken, did you have something you want to read to us that captures that? Or do you want us to discuss any other points and give you time?
No, Madam Chair, thank you. I think I'm ready to go over some language. Hopefully, at your stations, you have the language that we had originally circulated on this topic. That original language contemplated that the chair would be elected at the first regular meeting in October. So keep that in mind, that would be the language. But then, at the comma, where right now it says thereby allowing, do you all see that on the language, thereby allowing? Forget about that, what we would instead replace it with is this. "The chairman shall serve for a single calendar year, January 1st to December 31st, but shall be elected by the majority of the board at the first regular meeting in October prior to the upcoming calendar year for which he or she is to serve." Except that on Board of Commissioner election years, meaning years where...
Every two years.
Excuse me?
Every two years.
Right. Right, well, I'm just identifying as Board of Commissioner election years, meaning years where board members are elected at a November election. The chair shall be elected on the first Thursday following the first Tuesday in November.
Is it just cleaner to do it in November every year?
Yes.
It is.
And just make the first change, and just make the first change be from October to November.
It is, but if you just waited six more weeks, you could allow the actual board that's gonna be serving to vote for their chair.
You mean what we're doing right now?
To take that away from somebody that's gonna serve one year and not let them vote on their chair just doesn't, just doesn't seem right.
But if they have an issue, it can be changed. It's not locked in.
I understand that.
We can change our rules at any time.
I understand that, but you know, that causes more anyways. I've made my peace.
I mean, you've been chair. I mean, Chairman Samson said that it took her four months before she really was acclimated and felt in the role. I mean, we're trying, the purpose of it is very good to help somebody feel more a part of the position.
I just, I agree with all that. I just don't think we should not allow a new board to select their chair. It seems like we don't think they're gonna know what they're doing enough, and that's just a little bit arrogant, I think. And I just think they should have the right to elect their own chair.
Okay, so you were the one new member that had, this has been your first, you just completed your first year. Would you have felt disenfranchised, Molly?
No, absolutely not.
Madam Chair, if you want the simpler approach, and again, Commissioner Levent, I understand your objections, but if you want the simpler approach, it would simply be to take the language I drafted for you and say there'll be, that they will be voted on and approved at the first regular meeting in November.
So long as it follow, so long as, in the event that the first Thursday is November, is November 1st, second or third, so we haven't had Election Day because the first Tuesday?
Well, I mean, again, then you start talking about trying to make sense within the actual election.
How about the first regular meeting following the conclusion of the general election? Or November 1st, whichever, the first meeting of November, whichever comes first?
Okay, yes, I understand. So the first regular meeting in November or the first regular meeting following a general election, whichever is earlier?
Yes, it works. Okay.
Later, later.
Whichever's later, right. Anything else on this? Would you like us to vote on this, Ken?
You're gonna need to, and then...
Well, collectively, if anyone wants to vote on this amendment right now.
I think you need to go ahead and vote on this amendment right now. This would be part of the rules you'll then have to adopt in toto, so yes.
So as stated, I will make the motion to, for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of four to one.
You know, another, and we're off the subject, but another good thing that could happen is we could, that way whoever the new chairman is will have a chance to develop and sit with each of the board members and develop goals and some things that, the way we do it now, there's...
It can help you in the new year.
Yeah.
All right, any other items for discussion to change within our rules? I mean, I had some ideas, but I think they need to be fleshed out a little bit more. One would be the idea that, that we may want to look at the length of the term of those positions be changed, simply because I think this will go a long way towards helping onboard people a little faster. But if you don't get, don't even kind of get into the swing and get all of your connections with outside agencies and the state and all of the other people external to the organization that you work with till you're halfway through your term, it's a little disjointed, you know, when I would still get, you know, contacts and mails and stuff coming through the prior chair. And so I think at some point, and maybe that's not tonight, but at some point, if we're not going to get to a position in this county, which we may, where we're going to elect a countywide chairman, that a solution towards that end may be to extend the term to a two-year period. That's for later, I'm not gonna propose that for tonight. I did speak with some of my colleagues about a couple other rules that I'm interested in, but we did it for, as a gentleman's agreement, for several months in 2017, and then it failed to make the rules in 2018 and has never reappeared again. And that is, I would like to see a prohibition of personal electronic devices texting and basically Facebooking or whatnot during public hearings. And I think from a transparency standpoint...
It probably has nothing to do...
If a conversation is happening on your device, it needs to be heard by everyone.
It has nothing to do with transparency, because people do open records on our devices all the time.
They shouldn't have to.
Well, irrelevant. So if, and my objection to it last time was, if my daughter is off in college and wants to get ahold of me in an emergency purpose, I've got it turned off? That doesn't seem right.
Right. Well, my solution to that was that I instructed my family in an emergency situation to text my phone, and I would leave it with the clerk, so...
Which clerk is not so busy that they can keep up with all this?
Anyway.
Do devices include these also?
No, not our tablets that we have to have our agendas on now. But I'm talking about texting or being online on social media during meetings. I just don't, two things, one, I think from a transparency standpoint, it, well, three things. It looks bad. Secondly, if there's a conversation happening with a Commissioner during a meeting, the public's entitled to know it. And thirdly, you know, aside from the optics and the transparency, if you're not giving your attention to the person who is presenting their, they're wanting to be heard during their public hearing, and they're presenting their case to you, if you're not engaged and you're not listening, they're not getting their due process. So, I mean, y'all can keep it or kill it, it's up to y'all, but it's something that I think we should consider, at least during public hearings. Thoughts?
I have no problem with doing public hearings.
Okay.
I think that he says the constituents have better lives already and have our own potential.
They shouldn't have to do an open records request to know what we're talking about during a meeting when we've got mics sitting in front of us.
Would that make a difference to you if it was just during public hearings?
You mean like public comments?
Public comments.
Is that what you mean?
These meetings in this room.
She means the whole meeting from beginning to end. But the...
Public comments, public hearings. I mean, it's up for debate, it's up for, I'm throwing it out there, y'all. Y'all take a swing at it, modify it.
I've got two children in college, I've got a dad with dementia, I just had to move into a home. I'd like to have my phone in my hand if something comes up. I just don't understand treating us like children.
I will agree.
My phones are sitting there now, laid down.
I got a high schooler that's at musical theater tonight, and I've got two kids in college as well, so...
I will agree that going through my dad's death in August and it being touch and go and not knowing for weeks what was happening, I would get updates on my phone about, I mean, to me, that's an emergency and, and, I mean, you can't set yourself apart from, now, I agree with you. I don't think we should be texting, definitely, writing on Facebook, come on. I mean, we surely can separate ourselves long enough from Facebook to conduct a meeting. But I do think that we can govern ourselves surely better than that.
Okay, without having to make a rule?
I mean, I would hope.
That's fine, all right. I've put it out there at least.
Madam Chair, I think too, and again, I don't want to get in the way of the debate, the Board can take any action it want to. This is, after all, internal rules, how you govern each other. But within the context of maybe decorum, I mean, I think that if there was a problem and if it began to become something that was distracting, I think it could be called out of order.
Okay, thank you.
There you go. You've got that authority now, there you go.
For a few more minutes?
Yes.
Anything else, anybody else have any ideas of things that they'd like to see changed in the way that we govern ourselves? Does someone, would someone like to make a motion to adopt the rules as amended?
We gotta do the other one first?
We have already adopted the first one. And Board members, let me just say that once we adopt the rules, I think one of your next agenda items is to adopt the officers, which is a little clunky because we just changed the rules to make that occur in November. However, having said that, we will simply have to adopt the officers or appoint the officers tonight, and then this new rule will obviously kick in.
Just add the words effective and we'll, we can reconsider it.
Right.
Would you like us to go through the formalities of reconsidering?
Look, this is for our internal guidance, I'm comfortable. I do, yes, ma'am. So you've adopted the amendment, you just need to adopt the rules as amended.
So moved.
We had a motion and a second, okay, please vote. Motion carries with a vote of four to one, again, so... All righty, moving right along. Thank you for the hearty discussion, everyone. Moving on to the election of officers for this year, 2020.
Can it be in totality, Ken? No, can I make a motion just to keep all of the officers the same this year as last year?
I think that would be in order. There's no requirement that we adopt them individually, and if the motion fails, then obviously, we could then adopt them individually.
You wanna do something, y'all wanna do something different?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I think one of the officers has decided they did not want to be considered.
Okay, I'm sorry about that, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, Madam Chair, just to get us on the right foot, please let's don't do nominations, just someone make a motion for this individual to serve in this seat.
Thank you. All right, well, is there a nomination for the chair?
I move that Chair, Chairwoman Samson continue, another year is chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Thank you for your confidence. And I would like to nominate Commissioner Mills to reprise her role as my vice chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
She's my vice chair too, you know.
I know, but we're gonna bond, we're gonna bond.
It feels so wonderful to be fought over.
My wingman. All righty, and is there a nomination for Secretary?
I'd like to move that we nominate Molly Cooper for Secretary.
Second.
There you go.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Sorry about that, last year you didn't want it.
No, motion carries with a unanimous result, and so I guess we'll all stay in our same seats tonight.
There you go.
Announcements and reports. We have a very special guest with us this evening. I'm gonna try not to mess it up, I think I practiced it. Ms. Sanvi Warkey is here with us. She's the grand prize winner of the 18th Annual Metropolitan North Water Planning District Water Essay Contest, and Secretary Brown has something for her. Thanks for coming up.
Yeah, she's also joined by the Principal of South Forsyth. Thank you for coming, and her teacher and her parents. Thank you all for coming out. Water conservation is so vitally important these days, and it's just wonderful that I know our county, we, we start talking about these things at that age, but by the time they get up our age, they'll have solutions for it, for all of these big issues. So thank you again for, for doing that. So Sanvi is a sixth grade student at South Forsyth Middle School, and she was recently named the winner of the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District's Water Essay Contest. Not only was she named the winner for the county, but for the entire metro water district that includes Atlanta and 10 surrounding counties. What a wonderful achievement.
Great.
The Board of Commissioners would like to extend our congratulations to Sanvi, her family, and all of her distinguished mentors, and invite her to read at this time her grand prize award-winning essay on water conservation before we join you in a photo. So, Sanvi, please give us this essay.
Thank you very much, Board of Commissioners. I would also like to thank my teacher, Ms. Iman, my principal, Ms. Tinsley, and my family for always supporting me. Valley water conserve waters, save lives. How do you valley water, I asked my mom? Well, I remember back in 2007, there was a drought in metro Atlanta, she said. I was a college student then, and we had water schedules for everything, from watering yards to washing cars. There was even a notice at the gym to keep showers under two minutes. According to the U.S. Drought Monitor, the longest duration of drought in Georgia lasted for 161 weeks. Exceptional drought conditions in 2007 led to widespread crop losses and water emergencies. As I reflected on my mom's memories, I thought about the valley of water in my world. It takes about 88 gallons of water to make a laptop, my prized possession without which I wouldn't be able to read, research, or write this essay. If not for water, I wouldn't be able to eat the juicy red watermelon growing in our backyard. How does a person even take a shower in under two minutes? Leonardo da Vinci once said, "Water is the driving force of all nature." It is a resource that needs to be managed and used wisely to keep water crises at bay. The human water cycle is a process of how water is taken from the source, treated, supplied to homes, used, treated again, and returned to the source. According to World Vision, about 844 million people lack access to basic drinking water. Some countries are truly arid, landlocked places with no source of water. However, most water-poor countries have a bad infrastructure and water management issues. The state of Georgia is unique because we do not rely on groundwater for our source due to a thick layer of granite under the ground. Our main sources of water are Lake Lanier and the Chattahoochee River, which are surface water sources. They are managed by the Water Resource Management Plan implemented by the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District. Since 2001, the population in the metro water district has grown by 1 million and water withdrawals have reduced by 10%, which is a very positive impact of effective water management. Georgia gets an average of 50 inches of precipitation per year, and that water has to be conserved and managed effectively. The metro water district is doing its part to reduce water shortages, and we can do our part too. The Water Use Calculator on the MyDrops, on the MyDrop Counts website helps to estimate how much water a family uses. It was shocking to learn that my family's water use is around 300 gallons of water every day. Ronald J. Sider once said, "No one can do everything, but everyone can do something, and together we can change the world." Some tips to conserve water are turning off the faucet while brushing teeth, fixing leaks immediately, and choosing energy-efficient appliances. Without water, the earth was, the earth would be as lifeless as all other objects in the universe. Water is priceless, as described by the famous oceanographer Sylvia Earle. No water, no life, no blue, no green. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, at this time, Karen is gonna read the rules of the meeting and announce the public comment speakers. So if you have something you'd like to speak about, please obtain a form in the back, turn it in to the clerk, and come up and speak.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and members of the board. And unfortunately, the young lady's already out of the room, but I'd love to tell her parents to please have her stay in touch with the Water Department on public education. What a fabulous job she did.
Get that message to her.
We'd like to take a moment to review the meeting procedures. We ask that you please silence all cell phones and electronic devices. Those who would like to speak during public comments should complete a public comment form which is available just outside this room. Information regarding specific requirements to address the board is listed at the podium. Please state this information prior to speaking. All comments should be directed to the entire board and not to a particular commissioner. There are two public comment opportunities during the meeting for speakers to make a verbal presentation to the board, one now and one prior to old business. The number of speakers is limited to 10 now and 10 at the second portion. Speakers are selected on a first-come basis and are heard in the order in which they signed up, with the exception that Forsyth County residents are heard first, with non-county residents to follow until the allotted time has expired. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have three public comment speakers this evening. The first one is Anita Tucker.
Don't have to adjust the microphone. That's nice. This evening, again, I'm Anita Tucker. I live in South Forsyth. I am addressing Senate Bill 281, which was put on the agenda by Commissioners Levent and Brown. As a taxpaying parent living in Forsyth, I am concerned about gun violence, not just in Forsyth, but in Georgia and America. Today, I will share with you facts about just a few of the complex issues surrounding the gun violence issue. Every day, 100 Americans are shot and killed. Federal law generally does not cover abusive dating partners or stalkers. Many guns used in crimes in cities like Chicago are traced back to states with weak gun laws. Every year in America, 350 children under the age of 18 somehow obtain access to a gun and shoot themselves or someone else. Since 1994, background check laws have prevented 3.5 million guns from being sold to people that are legally not allowed to own a gun. In America, the gun homicide rate is 25 times that of other high-income countries. If having more guns makes us safer, then the U.S. should be the safest place on earth, and it is not. School safety experts, law enforcement, teachers, school administrators, students, and parents do not want to arm teachers. Nearly 4.6 million households have a loaded, unlocked firearm in their homes or vehicles. Federal law only requires licensed dealers to perform background checks. Gun shows and online gun sales do not. This Senate Bill 281 addresses the gun show issue in Georgia. About 85% of guns' suicide attempts end in death. When other methods to attempt suicide are used, less than 5% end in death. In rural areas of the U.S., most suicide attempts with a firearm are older gentlemen. Although Senate Bill 281 is far from perfect, the fact that there is concerted effort to define large-capacity magazines, automatic and semi-automatic guns, and gun shows encourages me. Senate Bill 281 requires gun show vendors to complete a NICS, a N-I-C-S, background check, for every sale, which is an improvement. Senate Bill 281 adds a new section, 1.6, that provides gun shop owners with a directive on how they must store firearms during non-business hours. Unfortunately, it does not address storing ammunition in the stores. If the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners is truly concerned about the safety and well-being of everyone in this community, I strongly suggest that these facts lead you in your consideration. I am happy to work with any and all concerned citizens and groups to develop a strategy to make our community safer. Thank you.
Thanks.
Our next speaker is Robert Hoyt.
My name's Robert Hoyt. I have a couple of things to talk about. First, I want to congratulate Chairman Simonsen on her reelection. I've come to some of the meetings, and I have watched a lot of them on TV at home with my feet up, and some of them run pretty long, but I know it is difficult to do the chairing of the meeting with all the things going on, and I know that former Chairman Levent had the same burden when he was chairman, and I just think that you've done a good job on that, both of you.
Thank you.
I also am very sad that Commissioner Brown has said he's not gonna run again. I think he has been a wonderful addition to the board, that he has brought executive ability from his military background, patriotism, and wisdom, including wisdom to know when not to say something, which I think is something I've really appreciated. I would also like to mention on your agenda, I'm looking at the agenda tonight. Now, the Planning Department has done a really good job having the different E-Status and other things informing the public about the zoning things that are going on. But I noticed the agenda has two things that I think could be fixed. You've got public hearings on zonings, but they don't say the address, and they don't have a thing to click on like on E-Status, where you could click on ZA 3797 and see what it is and where it is. And I don't think it'd be too much burden for the clerks to add on the agenda the address where the property is. I think that would be helpful to everybody, not just the district. And then finally, from what I understand of this Bill 281, which is apparently a major Democratic Party issue, what I was told was that this is gonna limit the size or capacity to, I think, six rounds and say you're a felon if you, at least that's what Chairman Levent told me, if you have anything more than six rounds, you know? And obviously, this is a campaign year, and there's a lot of fundraising going on on this issue by certain Democrats. This legislator who introduced it has done this kind of thing before, but I think that it is not likely to survive a governor's veto pen, and I think it is not likely to get to the floor of the House, you know, or Senate, or whichever one she's in. But I do think that the bill is a distraction, and I would support the commission coming up with some kind of statement towards our legislator about this. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a third speaker?
Yes, ma'am. Our third speaker is Frank Parker.
Good afternoon and evening. I'm Frank Parker. I'm here on the, who do I give this to? ZA 3963 rezoning request from R1 to A1.
Sir, you want to speak during public hearings or public comments?
Public comments.
This is public comments.
Yeah, there will be a hearing. Will there be an opportunity to speak specifically to that item?
Well, you call my name, that's why.
Oh, well, you were signed up under public comments, not under public hearings.
All right, thanks.
So, okay. Yeah, it's, if you don't do it frequently, you probably don't know the difference.
Okay, there are no forms that have been turned in. If anyone else would like to address the board?
I'm seeing a sheet go up in the air right there.
Please come forward at this time.
Hi.
I'm glad I'm here today, able to attend today's meeting.
Can you announce your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. We know you, but.
Sure.
Everybody doesn't know you.
Yeah. My name is Rin Chen. I'm a nine-year Forsyth County resident. I live in St. Malo. Like I said, I'm glad I can make today's meeting because I missed December 19th meeting. I already received the calendar for this year, and I will look at my travel schedules and other work schedule to make sure that I can attend more and more board meetings just like today. Actually, I will fly off this Sunday for a business trip, but I'm glad I can make it. In the past six, actually, eight to nine weeks, I've been working with all of you, I guess, either elected officers or appointed officers, and meet some of you individually and meet some of you in a group meeting, and I learned a lot how to work with county. And I think go forward, should be able to work on lots of common interest issues with the community. So for today, I really want to make sure I express my appreciation first for all your hard work. As I observed today, just at the beginning of the meeting, you were all working so hard, debating, deliberating on issues, right? You are not necessarily agree on everything. That's great. So really appreciate all of your hard work, and I have confidence in you to do the best job you can to continue to serve the community and serve the people. So real quick, I will go through my three items. Actually, I call it my New Year resolution for serve community this year. First is the short-term, security. Second is near-term, the community park. And third one is a long-term, land development. So for the security, I think most of you heard about the recent breaking in several subdivisions. So it caused quite a bit of concerns, including my subdivision. I've been working with county sheriff, and hopefully we can develop some kind of awareness program to make sure that residents get educated and have some kind of mechanism so that they can help themselves a lot. The second is the park. So Chattahoochee Point Park, actually, I've been there with my kids, tried to train them for 5K. The condition is relatively not up to county standard. I just want to bring up your attention, all right? And real quick, for the third is the land development near Granite Lane. We had a discussion last month with Mr. Brown and various stakeholders. We like to have a continuous discussion if this is possible. And finally, as a conclusion, those three items, I'm looking forward to work with county this year and forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the board? Please come forward. Madam Chair, I see none.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the adoption of minutes, is there a motion to adopt the regular meeting and public hearings of December 19th, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. Motion carries with a vote of five to zero. That was our last meeting of the year, and this is our first meeting. There are no other agendas. I guess we have the, we don't have a consent agenda. Just fought for it, but, yeah, okay. Didn't think so. All right, we're gonna move on to our public hearings right now. The rules are similar to public speaking, but Karen's gonna read them off to you and let you know the subtle differences.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. For the public hearings portion, each side, those in opposition and those in support, are allotted 10 minutes to speak. Those who wish to speak should complete a public hearing form which is available just outside this room. Please fill out both sides and submit your form to the clerk when approaching the podium to speak. If there is more than one speaker for each side, the available time will be divided among the speakers, and we will provide a verbal reminder when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, can you please brief us on public hearing number one?
Zoning application 3963. This is a county-initiated request to rezone 9.972 acres from R1R to A1. It's located in Commission District Number Two, and the property's on Woodsong Trail.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. If you are here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and distinguished commissioners. My name is Bruce Carlisle. I'm with North Georgia Land. I want to give you just a real brief history on why we're here and where we've been. Back in 1994, some 26 years ago, my wife came bursting in my house and said, "We have found the school for our son," and it is a whopping 29-student little Baptist church that had been rented up in North Fulton County. And I said, "Why in the world are we gonna do this?" And she said, "You're not gonna believe this, but these people are special. This is something unique." And as I got to know these priests, and I got to know the community that is standing behind me, I came to realize, these people are so serious about how much they love Jesus, they're gonna change the world. And they are doing that, and they've done that at Pinecrest Academy in 1996, two years later. They said, "Bruce, you need to get on the board, and you need to go find us a place in North Fulton for our permanent campus." And as I started looking in North Fulton, and as I started to get to know the politics in Forsyth County, I said, "Guys, you're making a mistake. We need to be up off of 400. Forsyth County is the future of Atlanta, and we need to go find this property." And so after finally convincing them, we bought the property where we're currently located in 1997 and opened our doors in 1998. If we fast-forward to 2012, the Archbishop of Atlanta was so impressed with the work our priests are doing that they assigned St. Brendan's Catholic Church to be run by these priests. These priests, the Legionaries of Christ, are now, have grown that to some 3,000 families, and we are growing like crazy. The problem is, these two successes have created a problem. Our wonderful priests don't have a place they can call home. They don't have a place that they can put their roots down and really be a permanent addition to this wonderful location. We have found a great piece of property on Woodsong Trail. That's the 9.97 acres. We've been working diligently with the contiguous owners. We have letters of non-opposition from four out of the five contiguous owners. We have a litany of restrictions that will preclude any obnoxious use and are welcome to add any others that could be of an issue. We just want a place to support our priests that they can call home. We have, once again, letters of support from the Claritas, the Davises, the Swansons, and the Moynhans, and that's what we're hoping you would consider supporting this evening. I wanted to have a few of the people that have been impacted by Pinecrest Academy, by St. Brendan's, and by the work that our priests have done, to stand up just to show your support. This is just a few of them.
Wow.
We're talking a minuscule number of the true lives that have been impacted in our community. And so thank you very much. And with that, I want to introduce Father Daniel Brandenburg and have him come up and share a few words about their work, and then we have one final speaker.
Okay, and before you get started, I just want to make a quick announcement. Please, everybody, if you spoke during the public comment section, or if you're planning to speak during the public hearings, please remember to turn in a form. We need to make sure that we have your name spelled correctly and all the information for the record. So, thank you. Proceed.
I'm Father Daniel Brandenburg. So distinguished county commissioners, friends and neighbors, as the designated representative from my community of priests who have dedicated themselves for so many years at Pinecrest Academy and St. Brendan's Parish, I wish to begin my brief remarks with a thank you and an apology. First of all, thank you to Bruce for that introduction. Wonder where he went? There he is. And to the county commissioners. And to the county commissioners and your team of dedicated professionals and public servants. Over these past months, I've had the chance to attend several meetings and witness firsthand how you conduct your service of the constituents of this county. I've been very repeatedly impressed by your dedication, your balanced judgment, professionalism and efficiency. So thank you for taking the time to hear out our support for this county-initiated rezoning. Secondly, I do want to apologize to you all and to some of our prospective neighbors. I've been away from the area for the past three weeks over the Christmas break, spending some time with my family. And then I was on a pilgrimage to Rome, Italy for, to give thanks to God for recovery from multiple myeloma cancer that I had this past year. I arrived home late last night and came across the letter that you all received today. Unfortunately, I feel that during my absence, the strong communication and good rapport we had built with our prospective neighbors may have suffered somewhat and the concerns expressed in today's letter from the lawyers to you commissioners and that same letter which was circulated yesterday to many in the neighborhood may be causing undue concern based on misunderstandings and incomplete information. So I apologize for any negligence on my part which may have allowed these misapprehensions to gain any traction. I hope to set the record straight. Throughout this process, we have one simple goal: to find a permanent home for our community. As priests, we've been serving in this area for over 20 years at Pinecrest Academy, St. Brendan's Parish and other ministries. And in doing so, we have sought to respect the law and be good neighbors. As Jesus Christ teaches us all, "Do unto others as you would have them do unto you." Matthew 7:12. And so we have tried to follow the processes as guided by Dennis Brown, our district commissioner, and Tom Brown, county planner, who's been very helpful throughout this whole process. And also to inform our prospective neighbors of our plans and what to expect. We've not hidden anything from anyone. We've sought to treat these good people as we want to be treated. We want a home. And we respect our neighbor's desire for their homes and the value of their properties. And with this in mind, I would like to note that the letter sent by lawyers is accurate in stating that our sole intent with this rezoning is to be able to have a home that fits within the county codes, but there are 10 inaccuracies that I would like to point out and put to rest. First, there seems to be a misunderstanding about where this is coming from. It's not an application, it's county-initiated. Number two, this was not a request from the Jernigan solely. Thanks to Rick and Sandy for all that they've done throughout this process. They've been extremely generous and working with us like no other homeowners would to make this happen. This has come from a joint effort for us, us working together with the Jernigans. Third, there is no intent on our part to ever have this house be used as a place of public worship, as a place for, as it says in the letter, "May be used from time to time as a gathering place for congregationers." That's not our intent whatsoever. We never do that in our private home. And our intent is simply to be able to have the rights that every citizen has, which is to have friends over. You know, if we choose to have a Christmas party and have friends over, there're gonna be a few extra cars, okay? That's all we're asking for. The fourth inaccuracy is that R1R is a proper and consistent zoning designation. As Tom pointed out to us on multiple occasions, that's an old designation which is no longer current. Number five, in the map that was presented by the lawyers, it shows five A1 properties on the map and it seems to cut off an area right next to it where there's a bunch of other A1 properties. So I don't know if that was an oversight or what, but there are several other A1 properties in the area besides the five shown on the map. Number six says there's no farming operations in the area. Anyone who lives in the neighborhood knows that there's cattle on one of the A1 properties when you drive on Major's Road into the neighborhood. And there's also a couple of properties where they cut hay. So there are farming operations in the area. Number seven, in the letter it states that it will overwhelm the existing infrastructure and then quote, "Also may prevent property owners from enjoying their use of the property." I'm not sure if they're referring to the use of the Jernigan's property or to the owner's use of their own properties, but certainly our intent is to be good neighbors and to respect people's use of their own property. Number eight, the believed intended use of the property is a multifamily, multi-dwelling property. This is simply inaccurate. This is not the zoning category that we're seeking. This is misinformation that is disseminated and an inaccuracy. We're seeking A1 zoning because that is what's been recommended to us as the way to have a second primary residence on the property so we can have our priests to live together in what we consider our family. Number nine, this, there was a claim that the rezoning is inconsistent with the UDC that US county commissioners have compiled. I think you're probably a better judge of that than I am or any other lawyers might be, so I leave that to your judgment. And lastly, there's a statement in the letter that says, "It appears to be done to increase the sale price." That is simply inaccurate. The Jernigans have actually given us a lower price than the market value.
30 seconds.
And they've been extremely generous with us. And I think that's a little bit of a slight on the character of the Jernigans. I just want to set the record straight. They've been extraordinarily generous with us and helpful throughout this whole process and are not making any extra money on this in any way, shape or form. So clearly, this rezoning has reasonable grounds. It's within the authority of the county commissioners and has followed the due process of law. We simply want to be good neighbors, to be good Christians. We look at the inaccuracies and characterizations of the letter as easily formidable objections.
I have to interrupt you for just a moment. Are you just about done?
Yes.
Okay.
And we humbly ask both our neighbors and you as county commissioners to approve this rezoning without delay so that our priests can have a home.
Okay, thank you. I was gonna have to add more time if you were still going. Alright, that concludes our allotted amount of time. For those who are here to speak in favor, we'll have some time for Q and A afterwards. Now I need to ask if there's anyone who's here to speak in opposition to this application, please come forward at this time and again, please remember to turn in a form. I may. Well, we'll have extensive Q and A.
I am here, my name is William Deal. I represent an adjoining property owner. And as the commissioners are aware, we filed a written opposition to this zoning, this zoning application and zoning variance. I want to give a little bit of, highlight some of the issues that we brought up in our letter, but also to kind of give a little bit of context about my client's opposition to this. And I think that really our opposition can just basically be summarized in this way. Here we have an R1-zoned property, a single-family, single-dwelling zoned property. And the intended use for this property, the intended use by the, through this sale, is to provide a multi-dwelling, multifamily property. And to accomplish this, the applicants want to change the zoning to A1, to an agricultural zoning. It's inconsistent with the agricultural zoning. It's inconsistent with the UDC. It's inconsistent with the county's development plan and it's inconsistent with the other uses in the surrounding properties. First, I attached a map that did show the surrounding properties, including the Woodsong neighborhood. And I wanted to highlight the neighborhood to show that most of the properties in that neighborhood remain or have the R1 designation. There are, the neighborhood is sandwiched between a few Res.3 developments. It's clear that throughout the surrounding areas, the intended use and the use of those properties is strictly residential. In fact, this property is located only a mile from the forum. It's a property that is half a mile from South, or excuse me, from South Forsyth High School and Middle School. It's a property that is close to the, one of the biggest hearts of commercial and residential development in this county. And yet, the applicant wants to change the zoning designation from residential to agricultural. And again, that's not because the applicant wants agricultural use of this property. The applicant wants a multi-dwelling, multifamily development. Also note that this property is serviced by a small, single-lane residential street. And my client's concern with this development is that adding additional people into this property, having a multifamily property, is going to overwhelm this very small street that services these properties. And I do think that that is something that could harm the other property owners. It will prevent them from using this, this single-lane street because there will be more, many more people using the street than there are currently. And as I noted, an A1 zoning is inconsistent with the county's uniform development code. This, an A1 zoning provides to maintain the characteristics suitable for farming. There is no intention to farm this property. There is none. And while there may be some other A1-zoned properties, the majority of those, the overwhelming majority of those properties are residential properties and have the A1 designation because of a historical designation. Those properties were not zoned R1 and then downzoned to A1. All of the properties are used for residential and just have maintained a historic designation. I'll also note that an A1 zoning is inconsistent with the county's comprehensive development plan. This property falls within the Big Creek area. That area has been tagged for multifamily residential units, or excuse me, has been tagged for single-family units, higher density, closer to the 141 node at the southern end of this characteristic area. And a single-family residence is outside of that node. In fact, I note that this property is only a couple of yards from the South Georgia 400 node. If this property were only a few yards away, closer to that node, an agricultural designation would be prohibited. I think that, I want to highlight the fact that this property, the applicant is proposing to change the designation from a residential designation to an agricultural designation, strictly so that they can provide additional residences. We don't oppose, we don't oppose the priest, of course, finding a home. We don't oppose, we don't oppose multi, or excuse me, multifamily development in other places. The concern is that the applicant is trying to subvert the single-family development that is, that this property is currently zoned under. And I think that passing this would be without any grounds. There are no grounds for downzoning this property, from going from a residential, residential zoning designation to going to an agricultural designation, again, for the purpose of providing additional residences. And that is, that is the conclusion of my presentation. I know that there are other landowners that would like to speak.
Okay, thank you. With the remainder of the time, if there's anyone else who's here speaking in opposition, please come forward and remember to turn in that form. There you go. Now you get it.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Frank Parker. I'm also an attorney, but I'm here tonight as a resident of the Woodsong subdivision. I'm a neighbor of Rick and Sandy Jernigan and Brad Reed and have been there for 25 years. This neighborhood has always been a large land, five acres or more, every resident there, property, residential neighborhood. It's not the place for a rectory to be built. They keep going around these words, but that's exactly what they're wanting to do. They're wanting to be, build a house, two houses on one lot of land, one of them to house up to 10 priests, which is all, obviously all of them are gonna have a car, or at least two per car. It's gonna increase the traffic on that neighborhood as well as it's not within the character of the neighborhood nor within the zoning regulations for A1. As a matter of fact, their very application, the zoning conditions that they place to it are what makes one agriculture. They say no livestock of any type, except horses. That's agriculture. No commercial horse stables. That's residential. No appararies, no agricultural equipment stations, no dairies, no forest use. All the uses that they say are prohibited are what makes A1 agriculture. I'd rather have all these things, horses, cows, pigs and chickens, than a rectory with two houses on one lot in a residential neighborhood. And I think most all the neighbors have. Now, you say you've got four out of five that signed. We've already spoken with one and said they felt pressured into it, but they did it anyway. They're an elderly couple in their 70s. And there's 14 houses, I believe, in this neighborhood. So that's still a minority that people's agreed to it. Now also what the applicant has said about whether some agriculture up there on Major's Road, close to 141. And that's right, they've been there for 50 years. Mr. Major's property was up there and that's been agriculture we use all that time. But that's not our neighborhood. Our neighborhood ends at Major's Road when it comes off Dog Legs to the right and becomes Scupperdon Lane in Woodsong. That neighborhood has never been agriculture, has always been residential. And I've raised my family there. I know the Jernigans raised their daughter there. Brad's raised his family there. And it's a residential neighborhood. It's not proper for agriculture. And they're actually saying in their application, they don't intend to use it for agriculture. So it's more than subverting the zoning laws, it's actually a fraud on them. They're saying they want agriculture, but then on the backside, they're saying, "We're not gonna use it for agriculture. We're gonna use it for something else. We use it for a multifamily dwelling." And it's not really gonna be multifamily, it's gonna be all priests living in a household. And it's just not proper in this neighborhood. It's not suitable for the private road, about the road. It's a very small road. There's no traffic control. There's no stop signs, there's no red lights, there's no yield signs. It's a private road that all the neighborhood knows about and watches out. And to my knowledge, in 25 years, there's never been an accident in that neighborhood. You're gonna bring people that don't live in that neighborhood, people that's never lived in that neighborhood, and now all of a sudden, with no traffic control. It's private road, we have to maintain it. So us neighbors had to pitch in together and put money out to repay the road, which we had to do about, I guess, 15 years ago. It's, I think, $40,000, $50,000 to repave the road. I think it's improper zoning variance from R1 and it needs to stay that way, R1 and not be rezoned to A1. That's all I have.
Thank you. Got about a half a minute remaining if someone would like to come forward and use that. And I'm just gonna do a quick poll here. How many more people want to speak in opposition? Just this one? Two? Okay. Would you guys like some additional time? Because if I add time to their side, you get time to your side too. Yes? Okay. Do we want to go ahead and add another five minutes to this discussion in total on both sides?
It'll be my motion to add five minutes to each side.
We have a motion and a second to extend the time. Please add another five minutes to that and then we'll bring the other side up for rebuttal. Please vote. And that motion passes with a vote of five to zero. Go ahead, we've got some extra breathing room now.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Scott Muse and I'm not so much up here to oppose this, but I do have a couple concerns. I do live in a neighborhood. I've been in the neighborhood now about 12 years. Been a local business owner about 15 years. We have a nice, quiet neighborhood. Everybody has large lots. Well, outside of fireworks sometimes, but my concern is, why, can they not just add on to the house? Why do they have to change to 1A1 or A1? And it also, Mr. Jernigan was nice enough to give me a list of all the things that it excludes. And I have no problem, is this mic working?
Oh, it's working. You're up close on it.
Okay. I have no problem with the priest living back there. But it does, he does have on here that somebody at some point could come back and ask to modify all of these things that they've excluded. And that's my concern. I don't mind if they, you know, build a mansion back there. I just want to be sure that if somebody else down the road buys this property, because you know, once that door is open, it's a whole lot easier to get a modification than it is to get a rezoning. And it will happen. I would like for the commissioners to be sure that it would be a permanent condition of this property, all these things that they've listed that can never be modified or rezoned. all these things that they've listed that can never be modified or rezoned. And that's, that's just my stance on it, but I think most of the people here know me. I've supported Pinecrest for years and years, and that would be my only concern, that down the road, if they did sell the property, that someone would modify that, and the can of worms would open up. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. We can respond to some of these comments or questions when we close the public hearing.
Thank you for listening to me. I'm Ginger Dean, and I do live on Major's Road. I have a few concerns about the proposition to have more people and more cars. I don't live in Woodsong, but I live on Major's Road, and the traffic will impact me. It's a funny curve going into Major's and on into Woodsong. The road is not real straight. It is a smallish road. My husband asked several years ago with concern to the county, "Why don't we have sidewalks? We have a lot of high schoolers that walk home on that road, on Major's Road." And it is tricky walking on that road. He was told that the county wanted to keep that road small so that there wouldn't be a lot of fast traffic. Regardless of that, with the new neighborhood, Cheswick, which is before my house, there is still a lot of fast traffic. The speed limit is rarely observed on that road. My concern with this is more traffic. I don't know how many cars they have, but every car that continues to pass through the road creates more and more. As my understanding is, I think the priests now live in Cheswick. I'm not sure what the situation is, that they are not able to be satisfied with those conditions. It is a lovely neighborhood. It seems to be very, very close, even closer to the school than what they're requesting now. And so I just wanted to put that forth, that it will impact the traffic. It will impact the nature of my experience on Major's, living on Major's Road. And just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a little over a minute and a half if anybody else would like to use that. I'm not seeing any. If you can reset the clock to five minutes for the other side. And anyone else who'd like to come up and finish, either finish or share your thoughts on the pro side.
Thank you. My name is Anne E. Witt. I live at 8875 Scuppernong Lane, and so I am in the neighborhood that is considering rezoning. And I have, I'm speaking to the character of the men who are looking to have this rezoning so that they can live there. I have known some of them for over 15 years because my children attended Pinecrest Academy, and they were very instrumental in their formation. Both of my children ended up valedictorians of their class. They've successfully navigated Georgia Tech, and they are awesome members of the, citizens of Georgia. And I attribute a lot of that to the positive influence that these men have had on them as well as on my family. As far as their extra traffic on the road, that's going to happen whether it's a family with four teenagers or six teenagers, or even two teenagers, or it's a house full of priests that have like five or six cars. The difference is, I can guarantee you, they are not going to be speeding up and down the road, driving through people's property like the children that already live in our subdivision do. And that's not their nature. And as far as the restrictions, I actually agree. I would like to see them loosened up. I know that several of my neighbors raise chickens. They have gardens. And they, nobody's had a problem with that. So if these people want to have a few chickens so they can, you know, have their own eggs, they want to grow their own vegetables, I don't think there's a problem with that. I don't want a chicken farm there, and I don't want, you know, a commercial business happening. But I don't think that these restrictions should be as tight as they are. And I know that a lot of the reason they want to be here is to be able to be in community together, and they don't want their house open to the public to come. And so that's part of the reason why they'd like to move out of Cheswick is because right now, people know where they live, and they can come in for counseling, and that's not what they intend to do. So I think that some of the concerns that my neighbors have shared don't have a lot of value other than possibly the traffic. But again, it doesn't matter whether you sell it to, whether it's rezoned for them or a family with four teenagers moves in. Okay? Thank you.
Just to share a little bit about why they're wanting to locate here. This is a place that's private, that's quiet, that allows them to do what they do best, which is really pray and have time and privacy. Cheswick is beautiful, but it is, they're currently renting two homes there, and so there won't be any additional traffic on Major's Road from this endeavor. The deed restrictions, we are totally open to whatever the commissioners would propose to. We want to be good neighbors, and we want to make sure there are no uses that would not be compliant and supported by the neighborhood. We appreciate your consideration and are here for any questions if you have them.
Good evening. I'm Sandy Jernigan. I'm one of the homeowners that is coming to you for the rezoning with the priests. I just wanted to make the comment to my neighbors. The reason we were doing the agriculture zoning is we worked extensively with Tom Brown with planning and zoning, and there was no other way that they could come up with to make this work for the priests to have it as their residence. Otherwise, we would have left it as R1R and let them have the residence. We were under the standing that there was only so many non-related family members that could live in one single house. So that's why we're needing to do the second residence for them, and that's why they wanted to turn our garage into another residence. So our purpose is, was to keep Woodsong as beautiful as it is. We've been there 22 years. We love our neighbors. We love our neighborhood. The priests want to keep it as beautiful as it's been all these 22 years. We've enjoyed it. They will, they will be very good neighbors. They don't want to upset anybody. But we just did the agriculture because that's what was recommended to us from planning and zoning as the only way to do it, because there's not a designation for, for these priests to live as a family. I mean, it's, it's almost a shame that they can't just buy a house and live in it like the rest of us. So thank you for your time, and thank you, neighbors.
Thank you. There's about one minute left. Mr. Hoyt, did you want to chime in?
Yeah, I, I, I've heard both. My name's still Robert Hoyt.
Got to play by the rules.
And all I want to mention is, you know, this gets in, I think, to the Religious Use of Land Act. We have, or you have, and the Planning Commission has approved priest housing. The most recent one in my memory was on James Burgess Road, where they, they had a number of priest houses across the street from the church. And I just think that that's important, that it has been done before, and something that should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anything further? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
We've got a motion in a couple of seconds. Please vote. Motion carries. Nothing further in the public hearing. We may have some questions, but it's time for our deliberation. You had a minute and, clerk, was it, what was left? A minute 38?
Minute 27.
Minute 27.
I make, I make a motion to rescind the closing of this public hearing for the purpose of letting them, opposing sides, to finish up their time.
We have a motion and a second to reconsider. That's what you're looking for. Please vote. Okay, we are reconsidered. Is...
Ken, is that proper? Now should we say we're not closing the meeting? Do we have to do another vote or not?
Don't. This is just something the board, the chair can direct.
All right, so should we reset the clock?
If the clerk will please reset the clock to a minute and 20, you say a minute 27? Please come forward.
Thank you, commissioners. William Deal again. I, I just want to stress again that the zoning to an A1 property is improper. This is not intended to be used as an agricultural property. It's being intended to be used as a multi-dwelling, multifamily property. And, and the restrictions, and, and other neighbors have, have highlighted this. The restrictions that are going to be put on this property explicitly provide that agriculture won't be used. And so why should this property be zoned, be rezoned to an agricultural designation when the applicant acknowledges that they aren't going to be using the property for agriculture? It's downzoning. It could reduce the tax base. And the concern that we have is that while we might have a, a, a good neighbor this time, when this property is sold, what's to prevent the next neighbor from, from putting in a hog farm? Or to putting in some kind of obnoxious use of this property? R1 is the proper designation on this property. It's the designation that the applicant intends to use it for. However, they want to use a multi-dwelling, multifamily property. And they want to do that through an agricultural designation. And, and that's our basis for opposing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we have expended, I should've got five more seconds. Is there a motion now to close the public hearing? No motion and second, please vote. And we are closed with a unanimous vote of five to zero. Commissioner Brown, this is in your district. You may want to...
Of course.
Comment, so hopefully, D2. I know, I have some questions for staff, but I'm going to let you leave.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
It's your district.
Go ahead.
One of the things that, there was a, a comment that was made with respect to being concerned that there was acknowledgement that those, those conditions could be modified at a future date. That's true with every single zoning. We cannot make a zoning that is in perpetuity. Georgia property laws require that we consider applications that come to us. It doesn't mean that they would ever get them. And I think, not to speak for a future board, but certainly when, when conditions are brought forward through a zoning condition amendment process, which is similar to a zoning process and that it does have public hearings, I, I, I would expect that the future board that might be considering something along those lines would have the history and understand the reasons for those. But that's a standard thing, every, the, the property that each one of us in this room owns is, it has, if they have conditions on them, everyone is within their property rights to bring that forward for a future amendment. We have it all the time for people who live in subdivisions that want to have a zoning restriction that was done on their entire subdivision changed so that they can fit a pool on their lot. And so it's not, it's, it's not quite as nefarious as it sounds. So I just wanted to kind of set, set that aside. But I did have a question for Mr. Brown first, which relates to, what is the current yield allowable for a rez three?
R1R? And when you say yield, the, the lot size, is that what we're...
No, what would, what, what would the yield per acre be on a...
Density.
Like a 1.7 or a 2, whatever, whatever the number would be.
Give me just one second.
Because we're talking about just under 10 acres here. And as there is rez three in the area and that was, was brought up...
And the district, R1, did you say?
In rez three.
Res three.
Mm-hmm. Because there's rez three right across the street.
Res three, 1.8 units per acre.
So potentially, the applicant, if the applicant decided to bring forth a rez three, which also fits within the comp plan, the potential is that they could probably have 16 homes approximately on that lot. If it's 9 point X acres, the yield would, the yield at least would, as long as the lot's carved out properly, they would allow, they would be allowed 1.8 units to the acre.
1.8 units would be allowed. There would be some subdivision challenges with access.
Sure, sure. But as a, as a top end...
Very high level, yes.
Top end, top end would be 16, 17 homes at a max, somewhat less than that in reality. But that's the reality. It could be that many homes on that piece of property.
If they can work out all the access issues, yes.
Right, right. But at, at a minimum, it would be more, it would certainly be more than two.
Yes.
Okay. The other, the other question I have for, for, for Tom is, I'm not as familiar because of these, the, the, the R1, some of the older districts have not been in use since I've been on the board. But is that a zoning category that would allow for them to do basically a small plat revision? And they could subdivide that lot? Because we're talking, again, almost 10 acres, that they could subdivide it and put two homes, one on each lot?
Similar to my last answer, yes, you could subdivide R1 property. They have some, I think, issues with access.
Okay. That was my other question for Tom. My, my question for Ken is really, it's kind of a, just to elicit a response. Can you speak to the issue that was brought up with respect to spot zoning or this being in any way a fraudulent? Because I heard that word used, and that's a very meaningful word, and I, I took some issue with it in that the A1 is actually, is not in conflict with our UDC and is not in conflict with our comprehensive plan. It's shown being available as a, as an option within the Big Creek district, the Big Creek character area, and so it is, would not, in fact...
Right. Madam Chair, two, two things. So with respect to whether or not, and, and some of the, the concerns we had heard earlier in the day was whether it was an impermissible spot zone. I've looked at that. Obviously, I think as one of the speakers mentioned, that this sort of use is in fact allowable in the Big Creek green area, Greenway, or, excuse me, the Big Creek character area. It's not in one of the nodes, so the speaker got that correct as well. And then, of course, once you get past even the, sort of the future land use map and the, and the character areas, you begin to look at adjacent properties. I mean, this is a proposal, as I understand it and have been listening carefully, that intends to keep the overall residential feel of the area. And if you look at the adjacent properties next to it, there are other R1R properties. There are, in fact, R1R properties that have agricultural portions of the properties next to it. So I have looked at it. It was specifically requested by the district commissioner because he was concerned about the allegation of a spot zoning, and I do not conclude that it is a spot zoning. I just could not get there and was comfortable advising him such. With respect to some of the more, the language that you mentioned, under our agricultural zoning designation, we allow residential. That is a specifically allowed use, along with obviously the pure, I guess I'd say, bona fide agricultural uses as well. I mean, I work in jurisdictions where the primary driver of residential is the agricultural zoning designation, so that is not unusual, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I have a question, I guess, for Tom. I'm confused about how we, I get that we wouldn't want all the houses in the county renting out bedrooms and, and, but this, this notion of us controlling the number of people and the sex of the people and all those things that were brought up saying it doesn't fit the family structure in general. I, when I took my real estate classes, the housing laws were like a fair housing act and everything else. I'm just shocked that our code is this restrictive.
And I don't think it is quite that restrictive. We have a definition of family, and that keeps, it gives us the ability to identify single-family zoning districts. And we allow single-family dwellings in both agricultural zoning districts and residential zoning districts. There is nothing in there about the sex of the people. It's a, it's a group of people related by blood or marriage, or a group of unrelated individuals that is capped at, I think, five with two rumors and borders.
Limits.
That's right. An individual, or two or more persons related by blood, marriage, adoption, guardianship, or a group of up to five unrelated persons. The definition goes on for a few more sentences, but that's the real heart of it. So we, we are fairly restrictive, but what we're trying to avoid is a, a boarding house or a apartment community, basically...
That's probably where it came from.
Popping up in a, a single-family area.
No, seriously, a lot of the old laws like that are, yeah, that's why sorority houses used to have sleeping porches. I'm not kidding. You think, Google it. That reminds me of a question I did have for Tom, too, and maybe either for Ken. But a description, the, the word multifamily was used several times in the discussion this evening or in the, in the presentations this evening. And do you characterize a single fam, a pair of single-family homes on one piece of agriculturally-zoned property to be multifamily? It does, the, the definition would be if they were condo units would be multifamily or apartment units, not a home.
That's right. We define multifamily, and that's a condo or an apartment building. But at the same time, I agree, if there are two homes on one property, using very common language, you could say there are multiple families on that property.
But fitting the definition of what we consider multifamily, looking at our UDC...
Not from the standpoint of our... Not from the standpoint of our zone-
It does not have the same, it does not carry the same meaning. I just wanted to clarify that.
I agree. This is a single-family structure, and multifamily structure is not permitted in A1.
Right.
Agreed.
Any other questions from board members? Dennis, this is yours, and we're monopolizing the dialogue.
Yeah, I think you've covered the appropriate questions there. And Tom, wasn't the limit of five was the reason for having the two, having to do the other structure, correct?
That's right.
So that's the reason for the, for the new construction? Because I think they were talking about just leaving it, the original structures at first, but then when we, when we all met, they said the additional construction was due to that part in the code that required a limit of five, I think, as I recall.
Exactly. Yeah, they identified they were potentially, maybe not immediately, but at some point have more than five people living there. And that no longer meets the definition of a family. Couldn't happen in one structure. But in the A1 zoning district, as long as your lot is two acres or larger, you can have two, not more, but you can have up to two homes on one lot, one family in each.
And that's a maximum, right? So that's a cap?
That's right.
And we'd be remiss if we didn't ask John something from engineering about the road. So, John, could you comment just in general terms about private roads? And obviously, they would, with purchase of that, they would undergo then part of the expense the next time the road was revised. As far as volume and things, do you, what, can you give us a ballpark estimate of your, any issues here that are your-
With regard to the maintenance of a private road, it sounds like that they have an agreement in place between property owners. So just because one property has two structures on it, I assume they share in the cost, but they would have to speak to the private maintenance. I understand it is a private road or private driveway or joint driveway that's named. I'm not that familiar with the typical section of the roadway, but-
Yeah, and I know you haven't studied it, and we haven't asked you to, but just in general terms, do you see, based on what you've heard, do you see any issues from an engineering standpoint that would impact this?
We would not, from an engineering standpoint.
Okay, thank you. Todd, do you have any? Oh, Molly.
One, how close is this location to your church and your school?
Yeah, the, that was one of the main reasons is we wanted our priests to be available to any needs they had at St. Brendan's, which is on Shiloh, which is maybe a three or four minute over Majors to Shiloh, take a left, it's right there on the left. And then Pinecrest is, you know, walking distance, two minutes away.
So the traffic, the additional traffic that was a concern, actually because of the location and proximity to the church, and particularly to the school, this really, that sort of eliminates the concern for extra traffic.
Yes, it's not something.
And now, this may be a little out there, and I know we don't have a definition of this, but this kept coming to my mind when you guys were talking. This is a parish, so to speak, right?
No, the parishes are open to public. And the only thing that will happen on this property will be relegated to the priests who live there.
Okay.
Unless they invited someone over, just as we would invite homes to our own, or guests to our own home, but this is not open to public. They don't have public gatherings there. This is, they really don't want the public coming back there. They're great neighbors, but they really want some time for them to recharge their batteries and to be left alone.
Because with that, I guess what went through my head in this definition of family, because that definition is something that is somewhat of a fluid definition and changes as time goes on, does it not? But with these guys, are you not, you're brothers in Christ, right?
Yes.
So, and this is your family. And even though we don't have a category, and our zoning for that, nonetheless, I think that's worth stating and recognizing.
And they're our family, and that's why we're all here to support them.
Sorry, I have to discourage that actively because we're not allowed to have any-
I've got one more question.
Yeah, thank you.
A question to the priests or of the group, are you, I know what you just stated. In our agriculture category, we do allow, and there are some large agricultural tracts that have events now. They have events, you know, several times a year. I don't know, Tom, what that rule is, and have, you know-
Private, private events are allowed on A1 property that's over five acres.
And, and some have large, large gathering of people that brings lots of traffic. We've allowed that and changed that rule to allow the flexibility in hopes of keeping land agricultural instead of more subdivisions coming in. That's why this is so shocking to me. I'm sitting up here like, my God, I've heard it all now. I mean, here we've went, now we're getting complaints because people want to downzone. I thought downzoning was like a, we do cartwheels, but instead, we're complaining about downzoning. And I never thought I'd see the day where people complained about agricultural. I mean, the complaints I usually get are people wanting more agricultural. We moved to this county because of the agricultural beauty of it and not complaining that somebody was going that way. But I do think if you're not planning, that might be some angst of having big events. That might be something we could address in zoning conditions.
I think that's included in the exclusions, is it not?
It is included.
Okay, well then, there you go.
And in addition to that, that's one of the great parts about having both Pinecrest and St. Brendan's close by. When we do have gatherings, we don't need it. They, they don't want people coming here to do anything except bring food and gifts if they have food. But that's, that's it.
Can you?
And they don't even, they can't accept gifts, so I misspoke.
Well, I wanted to ask that just in case that come up, because that is something that is allowed and people utilize in agricultural. I mean, we've got people that utilize it and, you know, make money off of it, but I just think that it is a positive, I mean, I just wanted it said out loud, so people, if we get an email about that next, it'll already be addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Todd, any questions?
I reserve my right to impress Robert Hoyt, thinking I'm very wise by not saying anything.
Wow. Personal growth in 2020. Commissioner Brown?
Ready for a motion, Madam Chair.
I am.
In view of everything and the, some of the concerns about this being rushed through, Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we postpone ZA 3963, District 2, for two weeks to the next regularly scheduled BOC meeting on January the 23rd.
And will you be bringing that back as another public hearing or as old business?
Or decisionally.
Decisionally as old business.
Second, for decisionally.
Real quick, we've talked with several, we're going to get a meeting together to see if we can work out amicably to the, to the satisfaction of residents in the area and explain to them exactly everything, and hopefully get a resolution that'll be win-win for everyone.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, please vote. And this item will come back as old business on January the 23rd. Thank you, everyone. Public hearing number two, Mr. Brown.
AZ 190037, located in Commission District Number Four. This is a public hearing for a county-initiated request regarding the deletion of condition number nine placed on zoning application-
Thank you. I'm going to let the room clear here before I start calling people. Yeah, I don't get one. Okay, Tom, you want to run that by us one more time?
Thank you. Zon, AZ 190037, located in Commission District Number Four. A public hearing for a county-initiated request regarding the deletion of condition number nine placed on zoning application 3797.
Okay. All right, if you guys could quietly make it out of the room. All righty, I'm going to go ahead and make, is there a motion to open the public hearing? We have a motion, a second, please vote. Public hearing is now open with a unanimous vote of five to zero. If you are here to speak in favor, please come forward at this time.
Commissioner Sean Courtney with Lipscomb Johnson, 112 North Main Street. On behalf of AutomationDirect.com, it's a zoning that you had a couple of years ago, and it's a county-initiated zoning to delete one of the, the conditions on the hours of operation. We had a public participation meeting that no one showed up at. We haven't gotten any feedback about it. And I'm here with George and Mark Herman. If you have any questions, please let us know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else going to speak at this time? You want to reserve that for Q and A? Okay, is there a motion, or, excuse me, is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition to this application? Come on, Bob. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
A motion, a second, please vote. And we're now closed. This is in Commission District Number Four, so Cindy, this is yours. You may have questions for Mr. Courtney, or you may not.
I think it's pretty straightforward. I mean, it, the way it was explained to me and one of you guys, some of y'all might want to elaborate one more time, but it was just, they have just a very minute amount of people that come into work at different hours than it's inside, and, I mean, it's, but it didn't conform with the rule that was in place, and they needed this to be able to run their business. So, nobody has any questions?
I don't have any questions. Pretty straightforward, like you said.
Do you want to put that, that can, what we're, that? I make a motion that we amend ZA 3797 of the condition as presented on the screen.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously with a vote of five to zero. Somebody just got off the easy button. That one was quick. Public hearing number three was postponed earlier this evening to February the 6th, so that takes us to public hearing number four. Mr. Gerard, would you like to brief us on that, please?
We'll be providing the overview of that ordinance.
Good evening, Commissioners. So, this is the second public hearing on this ordinance revision, so you can vote on it and it become effective today. Ultimately, this is just the penalties provision of the solid waste ordinance. You, in December, approved changes to the solid waste ordinance specifically regarding litter caused by trucks. And at the first public hearing regarding that violation, you indicated wanting to have harsher penalties in magistrate court for that. And while the magistrate court can adopt an ordinance fee schedule or fine schedule for individuals, this would make it basically mandatory that if someone is cited for causing litter with a vehicle on county roads, for not having the tarp covering, or something like that related to those revisions that you made in December, the automatic fine would be $1,000, which is the maximum allowed under state law. That wouldn't preclude me from basically negotiating a plea deal if we thought there were extenuating circumstances in magistrate court, but if they went to pay their fine at the window ahead of time, instead of appearing in court, it would be a minimum $1,000 fine.
Okay, and just to clarify for anyone listening or watching at home, this is for commercial vehicles that need to be tarp, not your neighbor driving down the street.
So, the revision that we discussed in December that y'all passed was related to trucks traveling to or from county landfills.
Thank you for the clarification. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. We're now open with a vote of five to zero. Is there anyone who is here to speak in favor of this revision? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition to this revision? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And we're now closed with a unanimous vote of five to zero. Any discussion amongst the Commissioners?
I think you and I attended a meeting on Monday night with the people that live in the area of the landfill, and this was mentioned a few times at that meeting. Have you got it adopted yet? When are we going to start seeing it enforced? And so, I think those people are very eager for it to be adopted. They're hoping that it'll decrease the amount of garbage that's left in their yards frequently.
Yes, it did come up, and that wasn't even what we were meeting about.
Oh, no. No, it wasn't.
Okay, would anyone, does anyone else have any further comments or questions? Are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the solid waste management ordinance known as Ordinance 84, with the changes regarding the penalties for violation to repeal conflicting ordinances as presented by council.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
And we should note that Ms. Esswin will be a-
I thought we might have to have somebody on standby.
Well, January 22nd.
An ambulance out by the door.
So, we've got a baby boy on the way, I heard.
We're excited about the seven days off.
A whole seven days, huh? Wow, aren't you generous?
What did you say, twins? Two weeks. Oh, I thought you went two, like for twins, and I went, what?
Bless your heart. Okay, item number five was withdrawn at the beginning of the meeting this evening. So it is now time for our second set of public comments. And once again, Karen Shields is going to read the rules of the public speaking, or excuse me, public comments portion.
Actually, Madam Chair, we have no forms that have been turned in, so if anyone would like to address the board, please come forward at this time.
Kurt? No? New glasses. Look at sharp dressed man tonight.
Very, very sharp tonight, Kurt. You really should come up.
Oh, we do, we do have- We do it twice. You can talk again if you want.
Yeah, because I was tired.
I cut you off, right? Okay, go ahead and, we haven't, we haven't opened the next set of business, so go right ahead.
You'll need to leave your quarter right next to the microphone, though.
Yeah, appreciate it. I have another opportunity. My name is Yun Chen again. I'm from Semallow, nine years of residence of Forsyth County. So I was cut short in terms of the three items I brought it up. I want to put a little bit more time and explanation on that. So the first item actually is the near term, I call it the near term item, security. And then, second item actually is the midterm, I call it the park. And the last one is the longer term. So I go through one by one. The first one, the security, the recent breaking in a few subdivisions, including us, the gated subdivision in Semallow, was causing quite concern. And we have a couple of meetings in Semallow and talk about security internally, and I've been working with county sheriff, just make sure that if there's any assistance we can get from county to increase the awareness. I think it will be more beneficial to the community, be able to do it more proactively on security and safety improvement, rather than wait until there's a incident, right? Historically, I live in here nine years, historically, there's here and there, but it's not as recent few months relatively frequent when we hear the news in the community. So it's quite a safe neighborhood. We like to live here, we want to make sure it's keep secure, and especially, like I mentioned, those gated community. I'm not necessarily says un-gated, we don't care. It's really about the, all the community, we want to make sure that residents safe. So that's number one item. Number two item is the Chan Gucci Point Park. I mentioned I've been running with, well, if I can have some time, it would be really good.
Three minutes.
Okay.
So you got a little over one left.
Got it. The park, I've been in other parks, like Greenway Park, right? And all the parks actually, in my view, is a lot better. I'm a triathlete and I train a lot. I train with my kids right now. When I bring kids to the Chan Nuchi Point Park, I feel unsafe with that trail. So I have to bring them to the Shikrak Park, right? You know, Shikrak Park actually is Fulton County, but live next to me. And they got the very well trail, and they have, well, I don't want to speak more, I will move on to the last item, which is the land development. So last month, we have a meeting with several stakeholders, with Mr. Brown hosted the meeting, and I was there talking about the 800-acre land development. It was quite interesting. Brought back the message to the community, definitely interested, and we'd like to have opportunity to discuss more associated with this particular topic. We know it's long-term, we know it's big. We know it's big. We ask county to consider in terms of community involvement at early stage. So finally, I want to make sure that I'm looking forward, working with the board and other offices, possible, to, yeah, work with community.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'm not seeing any, any other speakers, so I'm going to move on to old business number one. Oh, did you? Sure. We're, that will, yep. Okay. You can turn it in after you speak.
I'm Julie Kimball, and I've been a resident of Forsyth County for 12 years. I'm a little nervous. I don't usually do a lot of public speaking. But I assume you've put the 281 on the agenda because you, as a county, want to make a statement about gun legislation. And I'm hoping that you either will support the legislation or will not take a stand rather than to directly oppose the legislation. With all the gun violence going on in the United States right now, I think it would reflect really poorly on Forsyth County to just completely oppose any kind of common sense legislation that the state might consider. And again, if you, if you have issues with it, just abstain from making a statement rather than opposing it. And gun violence is not a partisan issue. It's a, it's a public health issue. And I have lots of friends on both parties that, that want something to be done. So, thank you.
Thank you. See, you got a second chance, Kirk.
I did get a second chance. I would like to speak something on the gun issue. And none of us like the loss of life. If you look at society, we have a spiritual deficiency in this country, and we have a lack of loving fathers in the households. And that's what's creating the violence in America. It's not the guns creating the violence. We have a spiritual deficiency in this country, and we have a lack of loving fathers in the households. And that's why we have this, people getting killed out there. It breaks my heart that we've got people getting killed. It's not a gun problem. It's a society problem. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may we ask the last gentleman that spoke to please state his name again for the record, please? I'm sorry.
It came from the spiritual voice.
Spiritual voice. I am Kirk Wintersstein. I live in Forsyth County. I speak only for myself, and this is what I believe.
I mean, you go on holiday, and you can't remember the rules, Kirk. Come on.
Losing your touch.
Don't let me go on by guidance.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Go and go and go on. Onto old business. Old business number one, Mr. Brown, can you please brief us on that item?
Zoning application 3952, Yusef Mtaara. Commission District Number Four is the location. The request is to rezone 19.423 acres from A1 to CBD with a conditional use permit for a contractor's establishment and wholesale trade establishments and commercial buildings totaling 102,400 square feet. The applicant's also requesting a variance to eliminate the required 5,000-foot sewer distance requirements to facilitate the use of an on-site septic disposal system. The property is located west of Georgia Highway 400, approximately 850 feet south of the intersection with setting down circle. The Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning from A1 to CBD with a conditional use permit. We have a redlined version of the conditions. Those are on your screen as I'm speaking. The public hearing was held on November 19th at the Planning Commission. The proposed use is in conformity with the comprehensive plan. Its staff is supportive.
Thank you. This is not a public hearing, so I'm going to hand this over to the District Commissioner, Commissioner Mills. This is yours.
Let those run through. I, the big issue that came up during this was to do with the sewer, because, you know, we've had sewer that has been allocated and set aside just for commercial use. And here, this one was coming in within the 5,000 feet, actually much closer, half of that, I think, right, Tim? And they were asking not to run the sewer because of the cost. And there's also, you know, creeks on the property, which is a concern. You can argue back and forth about needing sewer. So we've worked out a compromise, and Tim is comfortable with this condition, that it gives him the flexibility of being able to require the dry sewer. And with all that's going on around there, we think the sewer's going to be brought even closer. So it, the compromise was to allow them to do the septic on Building One, and then be able to, to look at, working with Tim, and it's within his discretion. He has that ability to do that. So that was, that's where we landed. That was the, the big issue. I have a great concern about the access along that part of 400. This is not just about this zoning, but after 369, GDOT owns no right-of-way. And so every parcel that comes in can get a driveway cut. I mean, and these are cars running in excessive speeds, coming, you know, coming north or south. And we're going to see more and more of these. I'm already having meetings of more and more parcels coming in. I went to GDOT, Bill Powell and I and Garen went to GDOT to talk to them about it. And they said that while they can't, they don't own the right-of-way, they don't have money to buy the right-of-way, but that we, as a board, can start asking for interconnection in parcels. And that's the reason the condition was taking out, taken out about not using setting down circle, because I know there was four residents that lived there that wanted it, but I'm trying to think about the bigger picture of access on 400. I mean, they've been granted a right-in, right-out, but it is still, when, it's not just this one parcel. It's seeing the whole picture of every parcel. So that's why there's a condition put in there about interparcel connectivity is trying, we have that in the Coal Mountain overlay. The Coal Mountain overlay did not go up 400. I think, Ken, you said that John could possibly do that, and we can discuss it a different...
Right. I mean, I think we've covered it here. I need to work with John on maybe some language for, for different scenarios, but I'm comfortable here we've got it captured.
I mean, if it means adding it, I'm sure y'all are comfortable with adding it to a work session and looking at the language that needs to be added soon. I would, I would like to do that at an upcoming work session quickly, because we've got several more parcels coming in. Anyway, I'll make a motion if y'all are ready, unless you've got questions. I make a motion that we approve ZA 3952 with the conditions presented on screen.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Onto old business number two, Ken.
Madam Chair, just a point of order real quick before we go forward. Just let me look real quick.
Do we need to say with the conditions as displayed? Did you?
No.
But was there variances?
Yeah. Variants in conditions.
I didn't say the word variance.
Yeah, I didn't hear variance. Let's go ahead and reconsider.
Is there a motion to reconsider?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
The motion is second to reconsider, please vote.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
All right, I make a motion to approve ZA 3952 with the conditions displayed on screen and with the variance.
If a motion, a second, please vote again. There we go. And it passes again unanimously. Thank you. That's why Ken gets the big votes.
That's right.
Number two.
Board members and Madam Chair, thank you for this. This is actually the product of, of a land use matter, I believe in Commissioner Levant's district, where there were some denials back, I believe, on December 5th. I believe then the, the applicant and the District Commissioner are now hopefully working together toward possibly a resolution that may make sense, not only for the county, but also the community. But it does involve, in fact, another initiated CUP or land use action that is in progress. The issue, however, became, under the zoning procedures law and even under our own Unified Development Code, that if there has been a denial of a land use application, which there was back in December, then at a minimum, the ZPL, the zoning procedures law prohibits us from reconsidering a zoning on the same parcel for a certain period of time. I believe the ZPL says six months. Because the, I think the District Commissioner believes there is a lot of utility to be had by this new application that they're coming forward with, he does, in fact, feel inclined to present it to the board fairly quickly, and we, in fact, are advertising it to bring it to you quickly. But we also then need to not have a denial back there in December, sort of messing up the transaction. So what I have proposed is that we move to rescind the denial from December, and so that'll take the impediment of the ZPL away. And then, once you all rescind that denial, then I want to postpone that decision for several months out. So from the applicant's perspective, they're comfortable, because that denial has now been rescinded, but then it's been postponed, then we can focus our efforts on the new, better, superior land use that we hope to achieve.
And the intention is, once that's all sorted it up, then this goes back
Correct.
To consider for the denial.
Well, and presumably what'll happen, Commissioner, to your point is, is once that new county-initiated application gets approved, then the applicant will simply withdraw without prejudice, and that'll go away.
And it'll go away. And I would like to have the counselor for that applicant at the podium to say that he agrees with that, for the record.
He always agrees with everything I say, Commissioner Levant, so...
Yes, sir. Sure he does.
Just, just so I'm aware, remind me what I'm agreeing to.
Everything.
When you over there text you're not paying attention and disrespecting, like...
No, Mr. Underwood, all we're talking about is, is tonight we are rescinding the denial from December 5th, while the other land use approval goes through. This one that we rescind will then be strong, you know, kind of springs back to life, but then we are going to postpone it to a date that is after, hopefully, the county-initiated dual-track application comes through. Assuming your client is comfortable with what gets approved, your client will then withdraw the one we're about to rescind the denial on without prejudice.
That's correct.
Thank you. So the way we're looking at it now is a...
It's two separate actions.
That's correct.
Yes, two separate actions. I believe we'll have everything completed by Tom. Have you looked at this by February 20th on their, on the county-initiated? Is that correct or not? I'm just trying to come up with the postponement date to, of March 5th.
Give it an extra two weeks.
Yeah, I don't have that date with me right here.
Okay.
The board is already initiated.
March 5th will be fine, though.
If I could ask, but because, again, we want to get this resolved and get this proposal, but what's, the zoning approval is not necessarily our lynchpin. The lynchpin is the closing of the doc, of the, of the property. So you all could approve this alternative use, and then the buyer walks. And so we can't, we agree just to withdraw the application. So what I would, until after the closing occurs...
We're not getting, that'll be a separate action. We're just asking for a date to postpone it, too.
And that's what I'm proposing. It says, so what I would ask you all to contemplate is, have the hearing, give us 30 days to close, and then put the date beyond that 30-day period.
So really more April 1st.
Commissioner Levant, how about April, then?
April.
And I won't be here on April 2nd, but I will be here on the 16th. Is that okay with everybody?
That's fine.
Perfectly fine.
We, we did not anticipate reopening the public hearing anyway. Maybe, maybe you do, but we would anticipate...
You had asked us to, to not deny or anything until after you had your approval of the new proposal.
And that's correct. I was just saying, if you moved it to the April 19th, that's not a public hearing day. We didn't anticipate you reopening the public hearing.
No, we're not.
You're just going to have a vote.
Correct.
So that'd be fine.
Okay. Very good. So Ken, what'll be my motion?
Commissioner Levant, to follow up on your question, I've checked on our E-Status website. Application summary, the applicant's requesting to operate an open storage yard with a related automobile service establishment, major and minor, 1,800,000 square, or 18 on Union Hill Road. That is scheduled, Board of Commissioners, on the 23rd of this month.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Levant, the first action that is needed this evening is simply a motion to rescind the denial of CP 190014.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to rescind. And that motion carries with a unanimous vote.
Now, before I make a motion for the postponement date, Counselor, both Counselors, if you will, that's the date we can vote on? This is in January, or is it going to be in February, we make our final vote on the new? Tom, are you saying it's going to come back to the board on the 23rd of January?
For public hearing.
Public hearing.
The county-initiated conditional use permit.
Because it's already been advertised.
That's right. So when can we vote on it? On that date?
Yes, sir. Yes.
So now I'm back to you, Mr. Underwood. That's way too long going out to April for a postponement for closing. What is your date for closing, then? March 19th will give you two months.
I think that's fine.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I make a motion to postpone item...
CP 19...
CP 190014 to March 19th, regular meeting.
We have a motion, a second, please vote.
Thank you.
Motion carries again with a unanimous result. All right, moving on to our first item of new business. Todd and Ken, and Ken, do you want to brief us on this, or would you like Commissioner Levant to brief us on this?
Madam Chair, I can briefly go over it. This is, the agenda item is Senate Bill 281. Looks like it's, has been dropped by Senator James of the 35th. There is not much legislative history on this at all, so it looks like this will be something brand-new. This may be something that is dropped routinely, I'm not sure, but it is a modification to Title 16 of the Georgia Code, the Georgia Firearms and Weapons Act. It does a few things. It's got a lot of language in the definitional section defining an automatic or semi-automatic gun, which means any weapon which shoots or is designed to shoot automatically more than six shots without manual reloading by a single function of the trigger, or B, without any action needed to fire consecutive shots other than having ammunition loaded. It also defines things such as a large-capacity magazine as well. Based upon those definitions, then you have, for instance, language in OCJ 1611122, which, as amended by this proposed bill, would read, "No person shall have in his or her possession any sawed-off shotgun, sawed-off rifle, automatic or semi-automatic," that's the new language, "gun, large-capacity magazine," again, new language based upon the new definitions we just discussed, "dangerous weapons," silencer, et cetera. Then it sets forth a series of offenses and criminal penalties that would be associated with either the possession or use of such weapons. I think one of the earlier speakers talked about also that it would therefore cast a net to include certain background checks with respect to gun shows and trade shows involving firearms. I believe, I generally agree that that would, in fact, be caught within the net of this statute. Madam Chair, that's my presentation, such as it is.
All right, thank you. I'm going to hand this off to Commissioner Levant. You brought this forward.
I did. So I've got law enforcement background, and Mr. Brown's got military background. And this is a nonpartisan deal, for the most part. I would agree with that to some level. The background as a law enforcement, I can, and by the way, I have no issues with background checks before people own guns. I think that will probably get a lot of issues resolved. Most of the weapons that I've learned end up in these cities where all the murders are actually taking place, and they're confiscating them after the murders, or usually stolen anyway. So it's not like they've got them legally through any background checks. And they sell for a high dollar up there in Chicago and New York and such, whenever they make it up that way. It's a big black market business. But back in the 80s, I can remember when we carried little six-shooters, and we were outgunned. And this stands the same thing with civilians nowadays, because back then, they started building more and more semi-automatic weapons, whether handguns or whether rifles. And in fact, I have one hunting rifle, hunting shotgun, hunting shotgun, long, long barrel, perfectly legal. It will become illegal if this passes, which is really ridiculous. So I would, I don't mind them coming up with some other language. It makes people, a background check at these gun shows and stuff is probably a long time coming. If I ever resell one of mine, I do it through a gun store, so they always gets a background check. Not everybody does that, but I do. I don't want that on my conscience that somebody gets it, they shouldn't have it. But I will tell you that you will find Democrats and Republicans and independents alike that bought a lot of these handguns or semi-automatics, and there's... handguns or semi-automatics, and there's millions of them in the country that carry more than six rounds. In fact, they all do. And there was a law one time was changed, and they ran them to 10 rounds or more, and you bought the weapon, they gave you a little short, little magazine that slid up in that gun with 10. And then now those sit in most people's safes, because that's not the law anymore. But the law-abiding citizen is going to abide by the law. The person that's not the law-abiding citizen, who's not getting the background checks, is going to carry whatever capacity magazine they want. So when the law tries to tell a law-abiding citizen, you can't do something a criminal can do to defend yourself, that's where the pushback comes from a lot of people that truly understand guns. And back in the 80s, there was a big incident where the FBI was carrying little six shooters. And they were up against a guy that stepped out of a vehicle with an AR-5, actually, he had a fully automatic gun, if I remember the story correctly. All four FBI guys were shot. I think one might have survived. And that's when you found law enforcement around the country go to high-capacity, so they call magazines. We went to what they called a Bretta, and they carried 15 in the magazine and one in the chamber, if I remember that correctly. But it was just to keep up with the bad guys. Good guys will follow laws. That's not your issue. It's the bad guys that you have to worry about. And they're not going to abide by these laws. They couldn't care less. They're breaking your house and take your gun, and you got to go back and go get another one. And thank God they have a little bit quicker process now if you have a carry permit. So if a single mom sitting in the house, her front door got kicked in, I remember as officers happened one time, she's in her house, they stole her gun to protect her and her children from what they've had as a horrible dad, if you will. And they had to wait a long period of time for she's allowed to buy a gun legally again to defend herself. But the bad guy got it instantly, and that's just the difference. So a lot of this stuff, and it is moving parts in this law, I just want to bring the public's attention, it's not our law. However, it'll affect us in this county as well as around the state. So that's just my piece on it. I don't know if Mr. Brown wants to say anything or not. I'm not going to be sending anything to the state. I think they get it. I think they understand the difference. That part of what they have, and it may make sense, and part of it does not. And they're going to have to work that out. So that's my piece.
Anyone else?
Well, I just see a lot of things in here that are, under Section 1-3, it talks about it's unlawful to use an automatic or semi-automatic gun in all those categories of weapons in, a list of things including aggravated assault, aggravated battery robbery, armed robbery, home invasion, murder of felony. So I don't know how effective, I think those are already, in a lot of cases, are already illegal, aren't they?
Using a shotgun, I wondered about that. Just don't be illegal.
Yeah.
Yeah. It is, it is. But the criminal doesn't care.
I think what happens and becomes part of this dialogue is a lot of people don't really understand what it's meant by a semi-automatic weapon. Very few people out there using the old six shooters. Most weapons, you know, I grew up with guns in the house, and I personally own them myself, and I'm a supporter of the Second Amendment. But, but I don't think most of the people that, that go with some of this language fully understand what it means. It's, it's unfortunate that it's become sort of an amalgamation here of, of probably some good policy with a lot of really misunderstood, incorrect, and, and just wrong information. And so I really frankly, I'm not even sure why we're discussing it here in this chamber, is it's not anything that, that our board presides over. And I think, you know, irrespective of how we all may feel about that, for us to send anything out to the other legislative body with purporting to speak for the people is probably improper.
And I don't, I don't know that we need to. I, I shared a pretty good video with the guy, when this first came out, a lot of changes have already taken place. There's all those moving parts in already. A lot of things have already been cleaned up. There's a gentleman that did a really nice video. I shared it out there in I think six little Facebook pages. One of them alone had over 800 shares just as of two days ago. And most of people are just really hating the bill as a whole. They just really wanted to
But I understand that social media is an echo chamber. People
That's correct. That's correct.
The stuff
But, but I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a point to do it. I think that probably got around the state pretty well.
So they're really, we can move on then? I mean
Yeah, we can move on.
Everybody say their piece, but I
I just had, when we got it and I saw it, because it's very uncommon, we have something on the agenda like this, if it's not, you know, particular to Forsyth County.
Well, it is. It'll affect all of us up here if it passes.
Well, I called ACCG because I serve on their policy council, and I said, why have we not been made aware of this if this is a threat?
Yeah.
You know, to our county. And they said, their words. I mean, if you're going to start sending letters on all the gun bills?
Right.
Get ready, because there's at least 10 dropped by the same people that serve in the Capitol every year.
Who are not sending letters.
And, I mean, that was
Right.
I mean, if, we yell at the state not wanting them to get into local issues, and, you know, this is
Amen to that.
There's a good chance that this one, this one, parts of it, parts of this, I might actually agree with, with having background checks at these gun shows. Parts of this, I don't get at all. And, you know
But I've heard it won't even get a committee meeting.
It'll cause a large part of all Republicans, independents, and Democrats that own these guns to write letters. It will. So
But I've heard
That Senator may be in danger now of getting reelected.
I called one of our state representatives, and they agreed that they didn't think it would even get a committee
I agree, but they also said it needs to get attention so somebody runs against this radical Democrat down there. That's what one of them said to me.
All right, we're not going to
But we need to move along now.
We're not going to get into a political partisan discussion up here. That's not what we're here for.
Yep.
All right, are we ready to move on from this item?
Yep.
Number two, Ken.
Madam Chair, Board members, number two is based upon some direction the board gave to me at the December 10th work session. You all are not strangers to this memorandum of understanding we have with the Lake Lanier Association. You did give me the opportunity, however, to craft it. It's a little different this year. You wanted sort of a two-phased funding. You wanted a $5,000 allotment for the services that the LLA provides to the county for the time period between October 18th of 2019 and December 31st of 2019 of $5,000. And then you wanted for calendar year 2020, there to be the $20,000 allotment. So that's the way to set up now. $5,000 for that short time period in 2019, and then $20,000 for 2020, as, with respect to the services that the Lake Lanier Association will provide. Those have not changed for years. It'll be the same sort of smorgasbord of services that they have been providing. This is ready for approval, Madam Chair. If it's the pleasantries.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second for approval. Please vote. Motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Item number three.
Madam Chair, Board members, we have an obligation under Georgia law to establish by resolution and advertise the qualifying fees for the various elected offices in the county. If you turn into your agenda packet, or if you flip to your page on your tablet or device, you will see the Exhibit A that has the 2020 qualifying fees for the various county commissioners, chief magistrate, state court judge, probate judge, clerk of Superior Court, tax commissioner, sheriff, coroner, and Board of Education members. I believe our administrative staff in association with our HR department have run these numbers based upon probably some guidance they may have received from ACCG as well. I think the numbers are ready to be adopted, and then we'll get them advertised.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second for approval. Please vote. Motion carries with a vote of five to zero. All right, we added two items earlier in the evening. New business number four is discussion of RES 6 zonings, and that was brought forward by Commissioner Mills, but
Yeah, Ken started off. I mean, this came up with looking at some old zonings in District Four, which there's a lot of. And there, I was, I was just shocked, and I've talked to other board members that did not realize either, that our design standards do not, they don't apply to RES 6 at all. And
Zoning any.
Well, we weren't zoning any, but I thought, and Ken read to me the language, and it sort of contradicts itself. You want to read that. At the first, it says one thing, and then within the text, it says another.
I think there's so many
Well, the
sexually different
Well, because we were looking at it being like apartments, and about it being like a
Not townhouses or condos.
Attached, or multifamily unit. But I've got a bunch coming in
That are detached RES 6.
That are detached RES 6. And now we have no, even though some of them were under moratorium for two years, waiting on this, us to adopt these design standards, and now I was floored that there's no design standards on them at all. I don't know if Tom wants to talk about it, or
Is the possible fix to that, just adding RES 6 and identifying it as detached? Any detached residential structure in RES, you know, whatever, 2, 3, 4, and 6?
If the focus is on detached product?
Because I think that
The majority of what we've already
Attached product is so different.
just implemented in December of last year would apply quite nicely. If it's about an attached product or a multifamily product.
Right.
That's a different
Windows, garage, they don't light up the same.
Those buildings are so structurally different anyway.
That's right.
Yeah, that wouldn't work. But for fee simple ownership and detached product, I mean, I, what was it, Ken, the language that you found that
Well, the beginning of the language on the architectural standards just talks about it's applicable to all residential subdivisions or all residential development. But, but if you do read it the way a lawyer would read it, it's very clear then when you get into the subsections that its component parts are only applicable to certain classes of zoning. So it sort of makes a broad policy pronouncement, and then begins to limit itself within the actual
So what, what brought this to light? Did we get alerted when
RES 6 detached?
When Counselor Underwood opened up that page and started reading it, did we get an announcement or something?
No, I think it just is, is the product of, of just practical situations coming to the county and us looking at the code.
Is there any way to make it really simple and just make them come back for some kind of architectural review with staff and the district commissioner?
There's an end to the other. There's an end to it, which you can get this off.
Before they pull their land disturbance permit?
Well, yeah, but I mean, at the end of the day, yes, that's very doable, but you're going to have to make it explicitly applicable to that zoning category, which it's not right now.
That's what I'm saying. But can we do it that simply?
Well, and what I'm concerned is, we've got, I had a meeting on a different one this week. I've been ongoing meeting about Mr. Davidson's. I mean, there is probably at least four more, along 400, that are just waiting, I mean, to be brought forward. I mean, I would like to get this change made ASAP. I don't want to tie up their property even longer. You know, after two years it's been tied up. I feel horrible about that. I mean, I feel, I mean, I can't imagine why we bothered to tie them up if we weren't going to do anything to fix it. The whole point was that the zoning conditions were terrible and lacking, and we would be able to have something, you know, of a standard in place. And I was floored. I was just shocked to find out that it didn't apply, and that we had nothing. Still the same old conditions that were terrible, that didn't give any
So what are you proposing?
Well, I mean, I would like, I mean, we've done it before. Can we, how fast can we get this done?
Have RES 6 detached as a category?
Well, we could, we could get it done very quickly, but the first thing we need to identify is what we're doing.
Detached RES 6 design standards. But I think that if we don't do something quickly,
I mean, if we don't do something, I mean, I don't, I think we have to do some type of a emergency moratorium.
We can, and we can put that on Tuesday's agenda with instructions to get it done, to get the UDC modifications done.
But I want us, this to be done quick, as quick as we possibly can.
Last time we did that, we thought six months and two years went past.
Wow.
And staff was tied up, beaten, you know, beaten their heads against the wall trying to get it right.
But
Limiting the content to detached product only, I can turn that around very quick.
Okay, good.
I can turn that around in
Do you think the attached is going to have to be a whole different discussion?
A few weeks.
Because the structures are so different.
Out months.
Make your motion, Commissioner Mills.
Well, you don't think we need to do it tonight?
You mean a place, an emergency moratorium on acceptance of land disturbance permits for
RES 6.
RES 6 zone properties?
With, with staff bringing a solution back on the work session?
Well, I think, I mean, if you want to go ahead and make that motion, we can this evening, but I would like to then make it again on Tuesday's meeting.
Okay.
Okay. You want to state it?
Well, I mean, it would just be a, the imposition of an immediate moratorium on the acceptance by planning staff of land disturbance permit applications on properties owned to the RES 6 zoning designation.
So moved. Second. We've got a motion in a second. Please vote. Motion carries with a unanimous four to zero vote, with Commissioner Cooper temporarily out of the room. Do you want to then send to queue up for public hearing those changes to that category?
Or we can do that Tuesday?
We'll do that, we'll do that Tuesday. So what I would
Do that Tuesday? Okay.
What I would request is, is that the clerk go ahead and add to Tuesday's agenda the imposition of a moratorium, land disturbance permit application moratorium on properties owned RES 6 with accompanying Unified Development Code direction.
All right.
You need a motion, or that's all? Do we need
No, two board members can do it, and I think
I'll give Ms. Mills her second.
I think everybody up there is in agreement.
I'll give the second, Rhonda, if you'll put that on the agenda. Okay, new business number five. A lot of wars.
Board members, this is something that I had been asked to put together. Hopefully you'll see a letter at your station that has at the top of it an attorney-client communication, but forget that. This is a letter that has been drafted to both representatives of our state delegation as well as our federal delegation. I believe Commissioner Levant had originally asked me about this. It's a letter that he would like to get out as quickly as possible and have it signed by all the board members, and have it personally delivered to representatives of our state and federal delegation. Both letters are the same, so you needn't worry about reading it independently. And the first line of the letter can be stricken, because the first line was written with an eye toward it only coming from one commissioner, and we always try to make sure that the capacity is made very clear if it's not coming from the full board. If it's coming from the full board, it's a different letter. So strike the first line, and it reads like this, "As you know, there is good news for Georgia with respect to the water wars. In early December 2019, a special master considering the case recommended that the U.S. Supreme Court deny Florida's bid for equitable apportionment of the waters of the Appalachia, Cola, Chattahoochee, Flint River Basin. While Forsyth County is mindful that the Supreme Court has not yet adopted the special master's recommendation, we believe that such relief is only a matter of time. As you know, Forsyth County has been pursuing water independence for decades with the county tirelessly seeking to construct a freshwater intake into Lake Lanier. Forsyth County has almost 200 miles of shoreline along Lake Lanier and yet is required to purchase freshwater from the city of coming. The county is optimistic that, given the findings by the special master, that the last impediment to securing both the Lake Lanier storage contract and a freshwater intake easement are within our grasp. To build a water intake along Lake Lanier, Forsyth County requires a storage contract and an easement. Presently, the county's legal team has been working through the terms of the easement with the U.S. Army Corps. The negotiations have been challenging." I will stop right here to say, there is a place where the letters diverge. To the federal folks, we're talking about dealing with the U.S. Corps. To the state folks, we're talking about dealing with the EPD. I hope that makes sense, obviously. Continuing, "On behalf of Forsyth County, I would respectfully ask that you take," yeah, "on behalf of Forsyth County," I think it needs to read, "we would respectfully ask that you take any steps within your authority to incentivize the Corps to streamline and expedite the easement negotiation process. Securing this easement in short order is critical to enabling Forsyth County to know what to do with respect to certain additional deadlines the county will soon be facing related to its water contracts with the city of coming. Critical deadlines are looming, and knowledge that the county has secured an intake easement from the Corps will be instrumental in assisting the county in determining the most responsible path forward to meet its water needs."
So Counselor, there's one thing. When you go into the second letter to the bottom, you do have in there assisting the county in determining the most with the sublease agreement for the storage. And I don't know, I'm looking, they both have to understand that's the hinge pin right now, is that they get that sublease between each other done, and who's going to be controlling the water in the lake? That, they've been very clear. Once they get that agreement done, the easy part is the easement. So, so these, these letters really have to encourage them to work together to get their agreement done of who's going to control all of that in the lake itself.
I understand.
Yeah. And, and by the way, I, I asked Ken that if we also all sign this. Yeah, you okay over there?
I'm going to have to ask you to take that noise outside.
Would you like to, sure it did. I'm going to use that one on my chairman, which calls me down one day.
I'm going to have to ask you to cease disturbing
Yeesh. Well, you know, maybe you're being watched. You don't know. But anyways, I asked that we all sign this. I think it'd be much more powerful if all sign this.
I agree. I've got a question, if it's appropriate time. I wanted to ask Tim
I've got a question, if it's appropriate time. I wanted to ask Tim. I know that we've met with counsel that's representing us. Is this anything that will, are we doing anything that we're gonna get yelled at by the council?
I think it's a good move to send something. I do think you should, there's some recent things that could have happened. You definitely need to freshen up with King and Spalding. I know, for instance, on the easement itself, recently, the Corps agreed to the change that the Board asked King and Spalding to make a while back about some of the conditions. So there's progress there. My understanding, like Commissioner Levent said, the contract may be held up at the Undersecretary of the Army between the state and the Corps. Help there would spur this thing along, but I would suggest, and Ken may be inclined to it too, there may have been some recent things that have happened that might need to modify this letter.
Yeah, that's probably a good point to run it by King and Spalding, but then also include them on the distribution when we do, when we do mail this out.
Yeah, I've been on this for 10 years, and if you don't stay on it, it doesn't get done.
Well, I will, I will say, the letter was purposely written to not be precisely specific on the ask, except just to help.
Yes, sir.
Gotcha.
Yep.
To deal with what Mr. Perkins is talking about. This is an evolving process, and keeping up with where it is is difficult to sometimes capture immediately in time.
And this is why I called Ken, because of legality, that we've talked about in the past. Let him handle the letter.
So Ken, do you think it would be appropriate for us to go ahead and approve the dissemination of this letter, subject to you maybe double-checking with King and Spalding, and then you'll bring it back to us if there's an issue, and we'll, what do you want to do?
Yeah.
I don't want to slow it down, but...
Madam Chair, no, I agree. I think if the Board can just approve the letter, approve the letter with direction for it to be run by our water war sort of legal team, which I will do, and then upon them giving the thumbs up, then the Board can just sign it when it's appropriate to sign it, because I don't want it to be dated like three weeks before it's actually delivered.
Right, I agree.
And so if y'all will just do that, I think that'd be an order.
So moved with all commissioners signing the letter.
Second.
We have a motion in a couple of seconds. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously with a vote of five to zero. Counselor, this early in the year, have we already determined there's a need for an executive session?
Madam Chair, there actually is, but, but the good news is, the good news is, is we can wait till Tuesday.
Oh, super-duper. In that case, is there a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and public hearings?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. Stand adjourned at 7:37 PM. Thank you all.